Like to call the regular town council meeting for Monday, December 5th to order. Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Present.
Counselor Mellon.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Present.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Present.
Counselor Gardner.
Present. We will rise for a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move into public comment. We've kindly asked that all in-person public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesperson. Please keep your comments civil and constructive and related to public policy issues. In the event that questions are posed to the council, we will note your questions in the meeting minutes and will refer questions to the appropriate department or staff to follow up and respond. All the comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have any question or comment about an item on the agenda that you'd like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question or comment to the town manager Dustin Anderson at D Anderson at Munster.org. Is there anyone here present that would like to speak during the public comment section? Please state your name and address, please.
Mike Demovic, eighteen thirty-three Tuloway. I know for the news you can use that the branch pickup is done. Neighbor of mine's had branches out since about the fifteenth of November. We haven't seen the chipper shredder go by. I would like to see you guys pull it up one more time and just go through the whole town and get what's still out there. Because I've seen some other places where they've got stuff.
Mike, I promise as soon as the last leaf has been vacuumed up, we will be back with the chipper.
Okay.
We run it almost year round, so it won't be the last time, but we've pivoted away. We've devoted all our assets to leaf collection. Fever's kind of broke on that. It's winding down. We are going to start branch collection very soon and then we will run it regularly.
Okay, because like I said, this is December is.
Well, with the snow, right? Like it's better.
That's where the leaves are going to go if it's snow.
That's right.
In the street.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any else that would like to speak during public comment? Yes, Mr. Caspar. Please state your name and address when you get to the microphone, please.
James Caspar, K A S P A R, address eight zero two one Coy, K O O Y, Drive Munster. Since Mike addressed the issue of the chips, I also want to address the issue that there are, in my opinion, a lot of leaves still picked up. So let's, as long as we're aware of that, it'll happen. That's my only comment there. Primary reason I got it through was under old business and looking at second, second reading and voting on ordinance one five seven eight. And I want to thank the council for considering, looking under exhibit F, considering an alignment that has four of the wards that have what I'm going to call river frontage on it. And I'll admit my thinking on this is skewed by the fact that I took six feet, eight inches of water and flood in my downstairs level. So I just think when you have an asset, I guess that's a different word for it from the river. It behooves the council to have as many wards as possible having input in terms of policies regarding something like that. So I'm glad at least four out of the five are going to be on the map that's going to be in the ordinance tonight. So I thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other public that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment section of the meeting. We'll move into the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Very good. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion a second. Any other comments? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. We will then move into old business. First item under old business is the ordinance eighteen eighty-six. This is amending ordinance fifteen seventy-eight, which is the ward district redistricting. This is for second read.
I move with the ordinance eighteen eighty-six and ordinance amending the town ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight being an ordinance amending the town code of the towns across the districts for the at-large, the respective member of town council on second read.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion a second. Is there any comments?
I know that there have been a few minor changes to the plan since last time that didn't affect where people lived, so that's quite okay. I still think that option C was the better option. Much. That's it.
Very good. Other comments?
Mr. President, I would concur with Counselor Schoen. Was a little surprised not to see option C represented again tonight. I know that option A passed on first read. Just to reiterate, in options, you know, the requirements are that they be contiguous, they be compact, and they be as close as possible. And option C made four, five compact wards available in the town, so they would all look like the current ward five. I appreciate the comment from Mr. Caspar that this having forest rations throughout town gives each of those four wards some consideration with the asset known as River Drive. It's also quite possible that you can have all five council members living south of Franlin, for example, and have no connection with River Drive. So I think that, again, just reiterating, they were a little closer as well, option C, and a little more compact, so I thought that was the option that best served the the intent of the state session.
Very good. Other comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
No.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
No.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Three, two, both.
Moving on to item number B or letter B under old business, or this is ordinance eighteen eighty-eight. This is an ordinance amending chapter ten, article four of the Munster Municipal Code. This is also second read. Information's in front of us. Is there consideration from the council? I move with the ordinance eighteen eighty-eight on second read. There's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Motion a second. Any comments? We do have Tom Vanderwood in the audience here. We have any questions for him or any clarifications?
The comment I would just make is estimated two hundred and seventy-five hours of staff time, which is not really creating value. It was pulled in after the floods to protect residents, and this is only impacting recurring contractors. So we already have good relation, a good experience with them, so I'm in support of this change.
Very good. Motion second. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving into new business, there's ordinance eighteen eighty-nine. This is the additional appropriation consumer water deposit fund. This is for first read. For treasure misses or anything you want to add to the memo?
No, this fund is just used for deposits made for new water customers after one year of on-time payments or when the customer closes their account. They get their money refunded with the increased deposit amount and the new method of, that are, the new way that our financial software handles the deposits. We don't have enough appropriations to make it to your end, so we're asking for an additional appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars. We'll have a public hearing in two weeks and it has been published, will be published, and then we can adapt on second read.
Very good.
Mr. President, I move to hear proposal ordinance eighteen eighty-nine for additional appropriations on first reading and scheduled public hearing on second read for December nineteen twenty-two.
I'll second that. Motion a second. Any comments?
Could you, how much did the deposit go up?
The deposit, did it? I want you to ask, rely on, does they have a controller at MABIT? Depends on the size of your meter. Some of them went up minimum about fifty dollars. They had been around a hundred. They went up to a hundred and fifty.
Okay, so when you.
The five eces.
When someone moves in and establishes a new account, they're paying in more money now and we have contemplated that. There's not enough people when they reach that one year mark.
Yes, the budget was created a year ago and then the rate increased earlier this year.
Okay. All right. Thank you for.
Very good. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter B, ordinance eighteen ninety. This is a twenty twenty-three salary ordinance. The memo that we have is from Clip Treasure Miss. If you want to add anything, and I know Mr. Anderson has also worked on this, we might have some questions for him also.
Yeah, it was a great collaborative effort. We're really pleased with the final document and we think that this will definitely show our employees how much we appreciate them and a couple of interesting kind of creative ways to try and keep pay equity. So our regular full-time employees at the lower grades of six and eight will get a six percent increase. Nine through ten will get a five percent increase. Eleven through sixteen will get a four percent in grade seventeen and higher, which are primarily our department heads, and that includes the Clip Treasure and the town manager. And each get three percent annual increases. Our town counselors will receive a pay increase of two percent. Our firefighters who are paid on call will receive a five percent increase and firefighter officers will get a six percent. The certified first-class officer rate, which impacts our police pension, that's a five percent increase. Our seasonal and non-recreational rates will be, have been increased to meet market conditions and the park board is expected to approve us a little bit of higher increase in the December meeting, a little wider band. A couple of new things just to bring to everyone's attention. There's a stipend of a hundred dollars per pay period, which is a bi-weekly pay for employees with a water operator license. Anyone, employee who gets their C D L prior to the first year of employment will move up a step, step within their grade. It's two personal days for each full-time employee will be in place January first, twenty twenty-three. And this is born out of conversations to demonstrate our appreciation to our employees for the challenges over the last two, three years. The building department, well, some members of the building department that represent the department out in the street, there's a clothing allowance for them, and then we, there was the addition of one additional code enforcement officer for the police department. So as well as the prior change in health insurance that we talked about a month or so ago, shifting to the town absorbing ninety percent and the employee absorbing ten percent. So exciting things in this salary ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that we consider ordinance eighteen ninety on first reading and schedule second read for our next regular meeting, which I believe is December twenty-fourth, December nineteen. Okay.
There's a motion a second. Discussion.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I would just say I appreciate all of the effort that went into this, of staff across departments, the department heads, and I think as Wendy noted, in conjunction with the increase or the decrease that the employees will be taking on for their insurance benefits, I think this appears is going to make real material difference in the paychecks that they take home. And that's our goal is to keep our employees well compensated, ensure appreciation, and retain those employees that do so much great work for us.
Very good. Other comments?
Yeah, I would concur with that. I don't, I haven't looked back at all the salary ordinances in the history of the town, but certainly using a stratified approach where entry-level employees or those who are compensated at the lowest level in the company get twice the percentage raise as the management and the utility team is really a message to the staff that we have their interests in mind and we know in the marketplace it's hard to get and retain people into these, into these positions. So this strategy really tries to make up any, quite a gap, but keep us ahead in that area. And also there are hard, there are in-demand skills, the upper operators license, water operators license, and commercial drivers license. These are skills that are really important to retain for the, for the town. And when we did this, when you led the salary study for Treasure Miss, we saw that there was an opportunity maybe to do something for days off, which is really important for mental health and time with family, and we've all been through a lot lately. So I think that is also a really nice benefit that we can give for the first time, take the days whenever you want them.
Very good. Other comments? Questions? I have two small items. One, is there any way that we could see, I know we have their authorized positions. Is there a way that we know how many are filled positions? That we could just have a short, you know, just a.
We can include that report at second read if you'd like.
That would, again, just more for our information than anything else. The other thing is with regard to holiday bonuses, this is again relatively small. I'm certainly okay with the town council members not getting a holiday bonus, but there's one other employee in the whole town that are full-time employee that doesn't get that. I wonder if we should consider that the town manager also gets a holiday bonus of a hundred dollars that the other employees get. It's on page four of ten of the ordinance. And as I was looking through that, I can, I kind of can see why the town council wouldn't get it, but I'm not so sure why another full-time employee wouldn't get that. So I would, I would ask the people that made the motion, that's something that we want to, or for discussions, that's something we want to look at or?
I would note just for the benefit of the council members who weren't on here, and that might be almost all of you except for Dr. Andy. I requested that my first year here, I didn't think it was necessarily the best look that the chief administrative officer get a holiday bonus. So know that if you do that, that's fine. That's your policy decision. It was a request that was accommodated by me many, many years ago. I appreciate you reading that and noticing it. Thank you.
Again, small item. I just thought I'd bring it up.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have an issue with that being changed.
Strike it.
Sounds like a great idea. So the person that made the motion, would they consider changing the motion to include that amendment?
I need to do that. I would need to.
Well, you really don't have to do any. You got a motion and a second.
Right.
Right. It was only first reading.
Okay.
And by consensus, you're directing her to make that change for the next, for the second reading, so she could approve it as amended at the second.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments then? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is letter C. This is the engagement letter. The IRA tax credit.
Yes, this is, in, in September, it was approved to look at a comprehensive financial plan. And part of that plan was to identify various potential federal grants. And through that process, we did find a grant that may help offset some of the cost of a new methane generator to be installed, you know, replaced and upgraded at the landfill. The inflation reduction rate has a grant opportunity, and actually we had to, it's a tax credit that we would receive for a potential reimbursement of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to offset the cost of about six hundred thousand to replace that new generator. So we're asking for you to approve the scope appendix to the engagement letter with Baker Tilly in the amount not to exceed by fifty thousand dollars.
Very good. Wishes of the council?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the scope and appendix to the engagement letter with Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Motion a second. Any discussion?
So I have a question. So are we planning on replacing the generator?
Eventually, it will require a full overhaul. So the issue at the methane generation plant is that generator or no, we have to maintain the well field if we don't want it to smell like nothing, right? So we have a situation where we need to maintain the well field and we need to have some kind of facility there. The facility that we have is going to reach end of life sooner rather than later. So there's two choices. One is to repair that facility or one is to replace it. What we've seen, and this, these are all like broad strokes, is that the generator that we have is oversized, which means it draws in way more oxygen than the methane can burn, right? So if you have a smaller kind of vacuum pulling things in, it creates a more dense methane content in the oxygen, which allows that generator to burn more efficiently and produce more revenue. So.
So we're looking at a smaller generator because there is less methane.
Yeah, there's a smaller generator.
Right?
Correct.
Other questions?
I was curious, sort of a point of curiosity. I mean, the Inflation Reduction Act giving us on the eighty thousand dollars tax credit is great. Now, I know it's not to exceed fifty thousand dollars in addition in scope, so it'd be much less than that. I also imagine these are really complex sort of grants and things to write, so we need to write. But I was just wondering what it takes to have the town have like a grant writing position or, you know, a third party that could do multiple of these sorts of things. I don't understand that it would probably apply to this instance in particular, but the Inflation Reduction Act, a lot of things that have come out have lots of money available. And I'm just wondering if we might think about how we enhance our grant writing.
It's certainly a topic of conversation worth investigating. I can tell you that the two most recent grants that we've looked at as an organization, this and the RAISE grant, for different reasons, are really dense technical documents. And you're going to be more successful with a subject matter expert like Baker Tilly. It's tax law and that very nuanced process with a law that's basically being interpreted as it's being rolled out, right? So you could have a very brilliant technical writer, but technical writing isn't the only thing that we're seeking to purchase here. We're seeking to purchase experience and a team of professionals experienced in this. Similar with the RAISE grant, I mean, that is a very, that was a very large document that required a team of people, not an individual person, and a team of people with very deep technical proficiencies in a multiple of disciplines. So I can see where you're coming from and we, as a council, we can certainly, you can certainly investigate it further. We can provide resources that you want at a, at a work study. But I would say in the two examples that come to mind, I don't know if a replacement level player would add the same amount of value as a Baker Tilly or a Sam Schwartz.
I put at risk the ability to get the grant.
Yeah.
Do we have a sense that we're getting a sort of good deal because of our ongoing relationship and the work that's already going on? If, if we didn't have, if we weren't engaged already with Baker Tilly in this instance, and we had to just go out to the market for this, would we be any more than this?
I found Baker Tilly to be fair, but, and we've been very happy with them, so very responsive. But I don't know what a comparable Baker Tilly would be to do the grant application for this. The part of the scope, when we did the initial engagement letter, was to look at these grants because they're seeing on probably municipalities all over.
Yeah, and again, it's not, it's not really a challenge to that. Just wondering what, what's the benefit of having some ongoing relationships with parties like this? Not that we're paying a retainer, but you know, we get access to that.
Yeah. It's definitely valuable.
Okay, thank you for that.
Very good. Other comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving along to letter D, the NICD invoice, number thirty-eight ninety-three. Deputy Tom Andrew, do you have anything to add to the memo?
Nope, not really. This is our, this is our monthly NICD invoice, and it's for work that was completed in September.
Mr. President, I would move to authorize a payment of invoice number three eight nine three to NICD in the amount of four hundred ten thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and eighty-five cents from the TIF allocation.
I'll second that. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. New business, letter E, boards and commission appointments. For Treasure Miss, put a memo together there. I think there's a lot of, kind of a view of things, but on page four is really the action that needs to be taken place at the council or doesn't need to be taken place, but is the goal of council to look at current members of the plan commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and the Board of Safety. If they should be reappointed or if members, or if members wish to return, if you want to have other members or other people look at. So we're really looking at, we should entertain separate motions to either have the current members of the boards and commissions reappointed for their respective terms. After we do this, they should be done in separate motions. Then we will quickly discuss because there is going to be an opening on the park board. Dave Servin, who is a longtime member of the park board, has elected not to seek reappointment. And so the council would like to, I'd like to have a discussion tonight about a nominee committee for that position or if there's any other positions that are open. So I guess I would first look at the Board of Safety. Dr. Lauren Brown is up for reappointment. His term ends the end of this year. Is there wishes of the council with regards to the safety position?
You need to make a motion?
Yeah.
You want a motion for each?
Yes, we need to, we need to have each person for each board done separately. So right now, I think, let's look at the Board of Safety and Dr. Lauren Brown.
That's page what? Where are we at?
Page four.
So it's four on page four. So I'm sure I'm right, because this yeah, I have a big draft that's up.
There, there's a draft.
Yeah. And really, it's, it's really if we want to entertain a motion to reappoint the specific person, in this case, Dr. Brown, to the Board of Safety.
Mr. President, I'll move that we reappoint Dr. Lauren Brown to the Board of Safety for a three-year term.
Second. There's a motion, a second, and a discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Then we'll move to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The person that's up for reappointment is Sharon Mayer. Is there a motion to reappoint Sharon Mayer to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
We're appointing Sharon Mayer to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Then Plan Commission, there are two people that are up for reappointment. One is Bill Baker, one is Roland Rappin. At first, let's look at Bill Baker. Should, motion should be just for Bill Baker to be reappointed to the Plan Commission.
Mr. President, I will move that we reappoint Mr. Baker to the Plan Commission.
Second. Motion a second and discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. And then the last person, Mr. Roland Rappin to the Plan Commission.
Mr. President, I move that we reappoint Roland Rappin to the Plan Commission for a four-year term.
I'll second. There's a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Then we do have an opening for the park board. Then we do have an opening for the park board. In, in past, when there's openings, that has been referred to the nominee committee, I, I would ask that, do we want to re you know, make that, or put that position and defer that to the nominee committee for their review and recommendation back to the council?
Yes. Do you want a motion, or?
Let's have a motion. We can just direct them. That's fine.
Would you like the nominee committee to meet before the end of the year, or is the, or what, what's your timeline to pull them together?
I, I think the goal of doing this at this meeting is that we can work. We'd like to have a nomination to the park board by the the second, or third Monday
Of this month.
Of January.
Of January.
Of January. Because Mr. Servin will serve on the park board through this year. So at least now we have six weeks if we can get that. That's why we, I wanted to do these reappointments today, so we didn't have to wait till January first to do more of that part of it all. So I, I think Clip Treasure Miss, I think if we can hold over the nominee committee, if we get it done the end of this year, which is very difficult in the month of December, or if we have to wait till the first part of January, that's okay also.
Okay.
That's a good question. We appointed someone, we appointed people to the park board last year, correct?
Yes.
And did it come down to, like, was there one candidate who was, who, you know, who was the right candidate who's still in? Do you know what I mean? Was there like two people, and we appointed one, and then the other one makes sense?
In, in this situation, last year's opening position, open position wasn't, needed to be filled by a Democrat. This year it has to be filled by Republican. On the park board is a state mandated, the two people has to be on one political party, two in the other political party. So, and again, I don't know, in a second, but just because there was an opening on the Democratic side.
This is a different
This is a different process.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So that's been the, the open position being referred to the nominee committee. I think that's all we really need to do with this. The, there was, on, on the memo, there is a some other piece, other committees, especially like the, I think the the Economic Development Commission things, I think we're still waiting to see from that person, if he wants to still stay on that, we can do that at the next meeting in December twenty, December nineteenth. Be relatively easy to do that, so.
Those two are expiring the first month.
Right, yeah. So we can still do that at, at the next council meeting. Yes. Okay, very good. Moving on, reports, are there any reports from the council?
I, I just have a comment. I wanted to thank everybody for lighting my event that we had this past week. It went very well. We had a large group than we did here before. But I personally wanted to thank everybody who participated in it and who actually did. All of you, so kudos to everybody that did help. So, thank you again.
Very good. I'd like to thank you, Councillor Trejo, for facilitating that. I was out of town, and as I got in this morning, the red eye, drove by town hall, it, it looks glorious. Oh, I think we've done a really great job lighting the building and the tree, but we will not blow over this year. And, and I heard that it was a great event, so thank you.
Very good. Other reports? Announcements, the next town council meeting will be on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P M. At that meeting, we will also announce, we'll try to put together and announce a twenty-twenty-three meeting scheduled for the town council. Other than that, there's no other business before the board. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, and then we move into the Munster Redevelopment Commission meeting.
Mr. Castro just texted me, he is stuck in the city, so he will not be in attendance.
Okay, then we will call the Redevelopment Commission of the Town of Munster, regular meeting order on December fifth. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
And Commissioner Gardner?
Present. Public comment section of this meeting, is there anybody here to speak to the council from the public? Seeing none, we'll move into consent agenda.
Second consent agenda is given.
Second motion.
Motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schoen?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes. There is no old business nor new business, no reports, no announcements. Entertain a motion for adjournment. So second. Motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Okay, now, anybody here that needs to have pictures for classes, if they want to come up and take some pictures or whatever, you can feel free to do that.